ARMC just received Level 1 Trauma Center verification by the American College of Surgeons.
It means that all of these services at the hospital are able to work together in a timely fashion to take a patient from the doorway to the definitive care place. We were Level 2 prior to this. By achieving Level 1 status, we've become a center that doesn't have to transfer any patients out to provide life-saving care.
It is well-known as the county hospital that serves in an empire vision with high-quality medical care, but also a great place to train future physicians and future nurses.
We developed a program, actually just a partnership with our local hospitals, to go out and teach them about trauma. It's a phone call, and then we'll set up classrooms for their physicians and ER nurses. And we're more than happy to go and provide this education because our goal is to provide optimal care for all of our patients, not only in our hospital, but in the outside hospitals as well.
So I think having education in addition to being able to deliver high-quality care,
San Bernardino County has always been the biggest, and once again, we're the best. This year, we earned an incredible 200 Achievement Awards from the National Association of Counties, winning more than any other county for the third year in a row. There are more than 3,000 counties in the United States, and San Bernardino County continues to stand above them all in terms of accolades for innovation, efficiency, and public service. Under the Board of Supervisors leadership, we were honored this year for making it easier to adopt a new pet, raising awareness of the dangers of fentanyl, bringing Wi-Fi connectivity to a Yalla Park, safeguarding employee emails from phishing scams, cleaning up our communities, rebuilding the Birch Creek Culvert Crossing with storm readiness in mind, launching the county museum's new and improved website, inspiring the next generation of county employees, improving access to healthcare records, supporting production of new housing units through a Housing Development Fund. And this is just a sample of the 200 national awards that San Bernardino County earned
Hi, my name's Angel. I'm an enrichment specialist here at the San Bernardino County, specifically at the War Animal Shelter. For the whole day, I get to like spend time and walk them, feed them, and play with them, and just to improve their quality of life. I do enjoy being around animals. I grew up with them. I have had dogs my whole life, and cats as well. First thing I do, I normally just clean the play yard or the catering room for the cats and dogs. And then I'll check my list to see what dogs are available to do the regiments. From there, you know, I'm just taking one by one throughout the 10 hours that I work here. And I just spend time with them, feed them, play with them, walk them. But since right now it's like summer, it's very hot, so we just play in the play yard and we're at the pool out there. What I like is that I meet new pets every day. I bond with them, make them adoptable, you know, find them a new home. Especially when it comes to aggressive or shy dogs, they typically change when we provide these regiments for them. Once they do get adopted, that's like the best feeling. When you make a difference, such as changing their personality, you know they're going to be adopted one day just because they're a happy animal. What makes me happy being working with this staff is that our main goal is to get these animals adopted. If you just love being around animals, this is the perfect job for you as well.
I personally always play ball with Levi. Cody always plays ball with Nolan. And then we have Sonia, who is upset if she doesn't get two buddies. There will be special requests on the field, like, no, you're my buddy. And then sometimes they get in arguments. Miracle League is a baseball league for people with special needs. Our role is to go down there and be their buddy. Whatever they need, help getting around the bases because we're in a wheelchair, assistance hitting the ball, throwing the ball, it's our job to make sure that nobody gets hurt. Everybody there is just having a good time. Both teams are rooting for each other. You know, there's really no competition, there's no outs. Everybody's just there to have fun. It's just a really neat program to be a part of. 6 o'clock is game time. They'll do the National Anthem, and we buddy up with our players. Sometimes you have no choice in the matter. They come up to you and like, you are my buddy.
You want to be my buddy?
Absolutely.
Tyler, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
We're with him the whole time. So he hits the ball, you're running with him to the first, second, third. It's all about getting out into the community that we serve. We will run into some of the players at the grocery store, on medical aids. You know, they'll instantly, you know, we'll recognize each other and talk about, you know, when the next season is coming up. You know, a lot of our players obviously have some medical issues, and we've gone to their houses on medical aids to already have the relationship. You know, we already know each other. The parents already know us. It is a lot different than just going into someone's house that you don't know.
I grew up in this area, and there were not programs that made kids with disabilities feel normal. So this is like a normal thing. This is baseball. We started in May of 2013. Fire and EMS and police guys are heroes. For our players to have the fire department come out and help them and be their best friend for a night, that's huge. It's awesome.
It's so beautiful being able to see like the parents come together and being able to hang out and communicate with each other. Being able to see the joy on the faces, there's literally never a bad day when I come to Miracle League.
We've had the opportunity to invest the town resources into Bremfield. They're used to the field, there's about a lot of comfort that comes from that. Yeah, it's been a real blessing to us in the community, and you can see the participation here. You know, the bleachers are full every night. That's the thing I dig about it.
Here, throw it to Nolan. Throw it to Nolan. Nolan, throw it in. Nice, bud.
He hasn't said many of his one-liners. He's famous for saying, like, if somebody's like really swinging at it, you know, like... I'm definitely invested in this community. It feels like home. Oh my gosh, this is amazing. I love it. All right, dude.
What's in there?
We brought gifts.
Oh!
Right?
Finally, a hat.
Finally, right? I'm Zach Taylor, the captain of the San Bernardino County Fire Department here in Yucca Valley, and I'm proud to serve. Today, we are at the newly completed Birch Creek Bridge in Oakland. This project demonstrates the county commitment to disaster repair-ness and disaster response. When Tropical Storm Hillary came through, it completely inundated this creek and destroyed the bridge.
The prior bridge crossing was a smaller 12-by-6 box culvert, which was heavily damaged by large boulders that came down the burnt scar area. Our engineering department put together a quick project to replace the destroyed structure with two 10-by-10 precast boxes.
I'm extremely proud of our crews and our engineering teams for finding an innovative solution to replacing and repairing this bridge.
These two precast boxes tremendously improved the ability of water and debris to flow underneath the roadway. The project started in mid-September, and we're standing here now on the brand-new bridge, which has been opened prior to Thanksgiving.
So often, county projects get held up during design, or because of environmental concerns, or material lead time. And this project, we were able to complete it in record time.
We have been cleaning channels and installing mitigation measures like K-Rail in preparation for the upcoming winter season. We have cameras in place to monitor the area remotely, and have pre-precision barricades and equipment to close down roads quickly and begin the cleanup process as soon as the storm is over.
With the reopening of this road, visitors and residents now have full access to their
Do you own a property in San Bernardino County? You may be owed a property tax refund. To find out if you have a refund, please visit the ATC website at sbcountyatc.gov. On the left side of the website, click "Unclaimed Tax Refund Search." You can search for an unclaimed property tax refund by parcel number or street address. For example, if your address is 123 Palm Street, only enter 123 Palm in the search bar. There is no need to enter street, avenue, lane, or any other portion of your address. If you have an unclaimed refund, the bill number, parcel number, site, address, refund amount, and a link to the form will appear on screen. If you don't have a refund, you'll be notified of that as well. To request a claim form, click "Form" on the left-hand side of the screen, and the refund information will show on the next screen. If the mailing address is correct, click "Yes" and enter your name, email address, and phone number. If the mailing address is not correct, click "No" and complete the form, including where you want the form to be mailed. Your request will be processed in the order it was received, and the appropriate claim form will be mailed to the address provided.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to call our meeting to order, and thank you all for being here today. This morning, our pledge and invocation will be presented by 4th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. It's my honor to introduce Pastor Dan Franklin. Pastor Dan Franklin has served as lead pastor for the last two years at Life Bible Fellowship Church, a nondenominational church located in Eplin. He has been pastoral ministry for over 20 years, 13 of which have been in his present church. A California native, Pastor Franklin has a bachelor's in Biblical Studies from the Master's College, and Masters of Divinity from Molnoma Biblical Seminary. He and his wife, Karina, have been married for 23 years. They have three sons. Pastor Franklin loves to teach and preach about Jesus, loves the local church, and loves reading, which is a new sport for me as well. Pastor Dan, please join us.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of you for having me, and thank you so much for the ways that you serve our community. So I'll invite you, if you would, to join me in prayer now. Father God, thank you for this time that we can gather together, and thank you so much for these county supervisors who serve our community. Father, we know they need wisdom to do their job, and so we pray that you give them wisdom. I want to pray in light of the words of James, "If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you. But when you ask, you must believe and not doubt, because the one who doubts is like a wave of the sea, blown and tossed by the wind." So Father, give them wisdom in all the decisions that they make. Give them wisdom in how to work well together and well with our community. And Father, I pray that you also give them, along with the wisdom, compassion for those who are in need. We pray that they'll live out the words of Micah, "He has shown you, O mortal, what is good, and what does the Lord require of you: to act justly, and to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God." Father, we pray that our community and that our county will be marked by justice and mercy to all who live here. And Father, I just pray in particular during this Christmas season that you give us eyes to see and eyes to wonder at the amazing things that you have done through sending your son that very first Christmas. I pray that the hope, and the peace, and the joy, and the love that he came to bring us will dwell in our hearts in a new and fresh way. And we thank you so much that Jesus died in order to pave the way for us to become your children through his sacrifice for us. I pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Dan. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. We will now move on to our memorial adjournments, and we'll begin with Vice Chairman Cook. Supervisor Hagman. Supervisor Baca. Supervisor Armandares. Wow, I have two this morning. County Fire lost a significant family member with the death of Don Westfall. And I thought that I would read a social media post by Isaac Higerman, and I know a lot of us in the room know Isaac. And Isaac grew up with Don, and his post was touching, and I thought it exemplified who Don was. It said, "The world lost a man of men today. Don was the epitome of selfless love. He gave his entire life to others, personally and professionally. He left a legacy and an impact that very few will ever match. Please pay for Teddy, his wife, and their entire family. Through love, his life was a testament to selfless love. Don and Teddy loved the Higerman family and dedicated every part of their three-plus decades in the Morongo Basin to families and kids. They loved this family through thick and thin, and every phase with zero judgment." And I think that that speaks to exactly who Don was. So on behalf of the county, we offer our condolences to his family. And then we also lost Danny Bogner, who was a personal friend of mine. He worked for the Forest Service. He was an off-roader. He was a Vietnam veteran. After my husband was killed and my kids were little, he was the first one to grab my son, put him in an early Bronco, and teach him how to be a co-driver and then a driver. And we hung off sides of mountains together, and he taught my kids everything they know about off-roading. And he was a significant part of the Big Bear community for very many. And so his loss is felt by all of us, and we adjourn in his memory today. We do not have any special presentations this morning, so we will move on to reports from County Council. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the case of Gregory Hamel versus County of San Bernardino, at all, the Board of Supervisors voted 5 to 0 to file a cross complaint against Gregory Hamel for damage he caused to Sheriff's Department vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports from our CEO, Luther.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Nothing to report this morning.
Very well. That brings us to our individual board member comments. We will begin with Vice Chairman Cook. Do you have any comments for us this morning?
No comments.
Supervisor Hagman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, a few comments this morning. First of all, Item 39 provides funds for Chaffee Communities Colter Center for the Copper Museum renovation project. Museum protects local history, including indigenous tribes. Item number 47 will fund a study for potential sports and entertainment facility at the Prado Regional Park to enhance current facilities. Item number 51 will utilize technology to allow real-time translation and captioning for board meetings to make them more accessible for residents. Item 79 is a grant from SCAG, almost $1 million to construct sidewalks to reboot carbon reductions in Supervisor Baca's district. Item 103 includes $1 million for Chino, $1.2 million to Montclair for public safety assets. Also, on item number 46, we have our economic development team going off to Mexico. In that price, it includes a sponsorship by the county of over $3,000. Ontario International Airport, we have new exhibits highlight 11 wounded veterans in both terminals. Thank you for all the service, men and women, who continue to serve and protect us. And we had two distinguished business presentations, one the Top Golf out of Ontario, and one the Logan's Candy of Ontario in November. And lastly, I was very honored to attend multiple parades this last week or two, and just saying that so much of the community is out and about, and really, just really happy that is well-intended by all the communities that were involved, that everyone's getting into the Christmas spirit. And it was a great time and honor to be part of all those. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Baca.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So just a couple committees we serve on. One is the OmniTrans Board. We have great news to announce. The OmniTrans Board approved seven days a week OmniRide in the Bloomington community, which has never been done. It was usually Monday through Friday. Now it's going to be not only seven days a week, but extended hours from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So this is great news for the residents there in Bloomington, which allows them to also, if they need rides, to ARMC. So it's just a great service, and really want to thank my colleagues for their support on that. On the IVDA, we serve on the IVDA. One of the things we announced is that on February 7th, Breeze Airlines out of San Bernardino will begin to fly to Provo, Utah, and then on to San Francisco. So they're increasing their flights, which is great news for our county and for our community. And then also, just one of the things we did through IVDA, we approved infrastructure will continue to be done there on Third Street Roads in the San Bernardino community. Attended quite a few events. One of the things I'm very proud of is our Holiday Open House, but I thank all those that attended and really, really supported. We had an outpour of support. We collected over 3,000 toys, which is tremendous amount of support. Were able to give Ruth Grimes Elementary School in Bloomington, the entire school, able to get toys, and we fed them in and out. But not only that, we've been able to provide many of our churches in our community and local nonprofits with many toys, and really try to brighten their day. So I just want to thank the community for their tremendous support. And we also supported our county libraries by donating many board games, and also supported all of our preschool services within the 5th District. Also, one of the things we had was our grand opening of the Whitney Young Center, which is a preschool, part of preschool services. It was in a San Bernardino building, which was dilapidated and old. Were able to move it on property owned by the Housing Authority on the west side of San Bernardino, will service that community well, and it's great to see support of the families in that community. You participated with our Sheriff's Department and SIBA with the Shop with a Cop at Target in Ranch Cucamonga a week ago. It was great. It's good to see that they continue to have good spirit and do great things for our families. Also attended the 237th Basic Law Enforcement Graduation, which will add approximately 30 deputies to our department. But also, the City of Rialto and San Bernardino Police Department are also gaining more officers. So that's good news for those departments. One of the things we did through social media is, you know, our county staff through Public Works, we're improving one of our playgrounds at Glen Helen Regional Park. So we allowed, you know, the community and public to pick the color scheme of it. So it's right now, it's on our social media. There's two different options, and we're giving the community the option to do that. And also really trying to encourage civic engagement. So this Thursday, we're going to be going to two schools in Muskoye, Vermont, and Muskoye Elementary. We're looking at doing some entry monuments into Muskoye. Staff has provided three renderings. We're actually going to allow the 5th grade students to pick the rendering, so we're actually going to have them vote, so they get to do part of civic duty and get to pick what the renderings are in their community. So we think that's important to encourage that for our young children. The last thing, just we have quite a bit of items, you know, that are approved today. A lot of good things. But one of the things I want to highlight is Item 77 in the Bloomington community on the Agua Montza Road. the Aguamontza Road. There's going to be some road improvements. Want to thank Public Works for their great work on that. Item 78, one of the items we did is in regards to money received from Congressman Aguilar, approximately $4 million to improve our Little Third unincorporated community right across the street from the Sheriff's Department. We have infrastructure that was installed by the East Valley Water District and we're working in conjunction with them to improve the roads and sidewalks for that community. Also, I know that Supervisor Hagman mentioned it, item 79, SCAG and CARB, about $961,000 for some sidewalks, which is going to be in conjunction with our new fire station, which should be up and running sometime January and February of early next year. So that's a great enhancement, especially those students that attend Pacific High School. Item 87, actually is an item where Regional Parks is going to be making a donation to the fourth district, Mr. Hagman's district, for fishing opportunities. But also in the fifth district, we do a fishing day with the supervisor for many of our at-risk youth. Item 98, which is great, one of the things that's been long overdue in the Rosina Ranch community is they're going to get a fire station. So I want to thank, you know, the group that's donating land to the County of San Bernardino. This is a great project, which will not only house our fire department, but also our sheriffs. Will have a satellite station for our sheriff's department. Actually will be located in the third district, so it'll serve the third and fifth district and actually part of the second district there in northern Fontana. Kessler Park statues, one of the things we're doing is we're having two statues built in the Kessler Park in the Bloomington Parks District. And the great thing is that we're having a contest where we're allowing high school students on the softball and baseball team to participate, to have their name and their visual image on the statues. And I know it's quite a bit of items, but the last item, but not least, is, oh, an MOU with special districts to provide a splash pad at Kessler Park, I'm sorry, at Yalla Park, which will be finished probably right before Memorial Day. So it'll allow the Bloomington community to have a new splash pad. And that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Armandares.
Thank you, Chair. I want to start by just saying Merry Christmas to every single one of you here. As we continue in this season of giving, I want to just remind everybody it's about giving back to our communities and how we can just make a greater impact. I want to take a moment to say thank you to my staff. We were busy the last couple of weeks with our toy drive. Our Jingle Mingle was a great success. We gathered over 400 toys. I want to thank everyone who donated. We were able to give to so many different community outreaches in the second district. We attended San Antonio Foundation's annual gala. We attended the San Bernardino County Court Legislative Open House Omni-Trans Mint Gala. We delivered toys to Redwood Elementary School. We were participants in the Fontana Christmas Parade where, as our colleague Kurt, Mr. Hagman said, you know, it's really a great opportunity and we see all the people who actually come out. I think I was able to attend several parades this year, Fontana and Uplands, and there were so many people out there just really getting into that season spirit and just to see everyone out was very joyful to my heart. I also got the opportunity to help Santa deliver presents and he asked me to dress up as him and so we were able to dress up like Santa and give a bunch of toys to a bunch of needy children in the community of Fontana with the Special Agents Foundation. Also, we were able to read books and give toys to kids with working dogs for warriors. And just once again, just say Merry Christmas to all of you and just let's try to remember our seniors and our veterans out there who are alone in this season. If you know someone, you know, all it takes is a call. A call can save someone's life. So let's just remember that when we're out here and just dealing with everyone who's, whether it's a mental health issue, a lonely senior, or a veteran who's dealing with something, let's just try to reach out to them and give them a blessing. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. I wanted to keep my remarks today to the outreach that has occurred regarding the wild burrows that are issues in both Riverside and San Bernardino counties. I know there has been a lot of media publication concerns from our constituents and misinformation, unfortunately, that has been published on social media. So the county would like to refute and correct the narrative out there of what we are doing to help the wild burrows. And we have a website that is up and running, correct? And that has factual information. It is our preference that we would be able to contract with a local nonprofit rescue and sanctuary organization that has the capacity to rescue and shelter the adequate number of undomesticated burrows that roam freely in the Ritchie and San Timoteo Canyons. And there are approximately 9,000 to 10,000 wild burrows that are running. Countless burrows are suffering and dying after wandering onto roadways and railroad tracks, after being injured themselves and encountering man-made objects such as fences. Burrows in Ritchie Canyon and San Tim Road endanger not only their own lives, but the lives of the people that travel on those roadways. And no one in this room wants to see continued suffering of the wild burrows. So we were disappointed that Donkey Land in recent weeks has declined three offers to sign an agreement with us and has stated that they lacked the capacity to provide sanctuary to no more than a small fraction of the burrows that need to be removed from the wild for their own safety and the safety of our residents. Peaceful Valley Donkey Rescue is the only organization that has presented a viable program to humanely rescue the local burrow population and has agreed to contract with the county as is required by Senate Bill 371. We are not happy that this will likely result in our burrows being relocated to other states, but our contract guarantees that our burrows will be well cared for, treated humanely, and live out their natural lives in a safe environment. We respect and value the ideals to which Donkey Land claims to aspire and we hope that Donkey Land will acquire the capacity that we'll be able to work with the county in the future to address all of the needs. For now, the county will do what it has to do that is necessary to mitigate the suffering, mitigate the danger, and to ensure our wild burrows have an opportunity to live their best lives. Thank you. Lena, do we have any changes to today's agenda?
Good morning, Madam Chair. No, we have no changes today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to conflicts of interest. Do we have any board members wishing to disclose a conflict of interest? All right. Our consent calendar today consists of items number two through 107. Do we have any board members wishing to pull an item for discussion? Make comments? All right, we have a number... We have no requests to speak for consent calendar.
Consent to Jenna.
Thank you. I have a motion from Supervisor Hagman, a second from Supervisor Baca. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
With that, the motion for the consent calendar is moved to, excuse me, unanimously.
Very good. And today we do not have any discussion items. So we will move on to a public comment from members of the public wishing to speak on items not on today's agenda. And our first request to speak is from Janelle Ruiz, who will be followed by Jane Hunt Rubel.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors and County Staff. My name is Janelle Ruiz and I'm the new Public Affairs Manager for SoCalGas, covering most of San Bernardino County. And although I may be new to my role, I have been at the company for almost 14 years, so I'm not new to the utility. And I am here just to formally introduce myself as your new direct contact. Should you need anything, I have left business cards for you all. And lastly, I am just excited to continue to foster this relationship and take you all on the journey as SoCalGas embarks on being the cleanest, safest, most innovative energy company in America. Thank you for your time and wishing everyone happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Jane Hunt Rubel, who will be followed by Karen Contreras.
Good morning, board members. I hope you have a nice holidays and a great new year. Hopefully, next year is going to be a better one than this year. And I'd like to thank the county for doing a lot of good so far, but also there's a few things, like I'd like to see a more of a push for the countywide plan of the Environment Element Group Conservation Preservation move on forward because it's been on hold for about since 2018, I think, or 2017. And I'd really like to see that push next year above everything else because we need to have precious land protected for like the burrows and all the other wild animals, as well as humans, especially here in the valley area. And overpopulation is a big problem. And why not economically be it feasible for the county, especially in the valley area, to have it protected of the land that's left in the valley area, like Lidle Creek Wash and Cajon Wash and the Santa Ana River Wash? It needs to be protected and I would like to see that be a top priority next year. And also, I'd like to sing a little bit of song. Let there be peace on earth. Let there be peace on earth and let it begin with us. Let there be peace on earth, the peace that was meant to be. So I wish the whole world, all this went in, but I know it's impossible, but there's got to be some hope and I'm hanging on to hope for our county, for our cities, and the whole world. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. Karen Contreras, who will be followed by Randy Whitcomb.
Hi, my name is Karen Contreras and I was here earlier this year to receive the greatest honor of my life, being Teacher of the Year for the Rialto School District. And Joe Baca Jr. gave me that award and it was one of the most important things that I've ever done in my life. And I want to thank you for all your services in honoring the teachers of this county. And I have another issue. I live in Ritchie Canyon and the burrows, you know, were taken from our canyon and we had quite a few of them that have disappeared during the days and, you know, in the news, it was in the news last night and, you know, they have gone. A lot of the residents didn't know what was happening. There was no transparency. We didn't even know about that. The burrows play an important role in our canyon. I live in Ritchie Canyon Estates. I've lived there for seven years. And, you know, it's very important fire control for us. We are a Stage 10 fire zone and it's a very dangerous area, especially, well, now it's year-round. So with the donkeys help, you know, they help eat the brush and it keeps the fire danger low. And we understand that there's, you know, different things, people's opinions about the donkeys. And, you know, should they be there? They've been there a long time. They bother the traffic, it's unsafe, but they also help us in the canyon to control that fire danger. And when it is gone, most of the residents in my Ritchie Canyon Estates are on the fair plan right now. And they all began the fair plan, the California Fair Plan, which is an expensive way to insure our homes. And now, without that fire protection, what do you have? Do you have a plan to further protect us against those fires? Because we have no other way of protecting our homes. And when that's a problem, then, you know, my house gets burnt down because the burrows are no longer protecting it, then there's going to be a problem. I will file a lawsuit because of that. It's very important, the burrows are very important in our canyon for that. And that needs to be taken into consideration. They just can't be moved. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Whitcomb, followed by Brandy Augustin.
Yeah, good morning, Randy Whitcomb, also a resident of Ritchie Canyon. I'm not going to beat a dead horse. It's the same thing that we just were pretty much told. I do want to just express again for our community, pretty much the same thing. Everybody in the canyon, or most everybody in the canyon, has lost their fire part of their homeowner's insurance over the last few years. We are all on our California Fair Plan. Our insurance has more than doubled, almost quadrupled actually, over the years. Yeah, the donkeys, they do play a huge part in fire protection. We also do have the comments that people say that they are a road hazard, they do get out on the roads. And that is true and it is unfortunate. One thing about Ritchie Canyon is that is a canyon that is not patrolled. If people just kind of slowed down, it really wouldn't be an issue in Ritchie Canyon for people to hit burrows as they come around the road. You know, the speed limit in Ritchie Canyon is between 45 and 50. I live right there at Scotch Lane, which we commonly refer to as Dead Man's Curve. I live up above and I look down upon Ritchie Canyon. I have been first responder for about four or five pretty gnarly accidents, two of them which were fatalities. None of them involved burrows, just speed. We got people that are running in a 75, 80 through the canyon and they come around the corner, yeah, burrows are there, they're going to get hit. So that's another issue all in itself. But as far as the burrows go in the canyon, I, again, fire danger is probably top priority. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brandy Augustin, followed by Francine Catarizano Burke.
Good morning, county supervisors. First of all, let me thank you for your service to our county and our community. We appreciate the time that you spend to ensure that we all remain safe and our community and our county continue to flourish. I am here today along with my neighbors to speak about the wild burrows in Ritchie Canyon. For years, the burrows have been a part of the canyon community. We fight to remain a small, close-knit rural agricultural community. Many of us continue to maintain horses, livestock throughout the canyon. The donkeys are part of our Western lifestyle. They're part of our community and the culture of Ritchie Canyon. Removing the burrows from Ritchie Canyon will be removing the heart of our canyon and part of our community members. We have nicknames for them. Many of us have fostered them until they're well enough to go back into the wild. Many community members would indeed adopt them themselves. The other day, I had an adorable little black baby one. He was so cute. I'm like, I would love to keep him, especially with all these roundups happening, so I could at least keep a part of my canyon on my property. I asked the council to research and look up Peaceful Valley. Looking at their tax returns from the last couple of years, the taxable or the contributions that they say that they've received is around $10,000 each year. I don't know how they're going to support 9,000 donkeys with $10,000 a year, including the fuel costs to come out and capture the donkeys, which often, and we found out, is happening on private property without consent. They are going onto people's property and last time they came out to round them up, they were called for trespassing. They show up in Ritchie Canyon with unmarked vehicles, unannounced, without transparency to what's happening with the burrows. And when community members come because they are concerned about our burrows, they're told to scram. They're told to mind their own business and they're told to go away. We're asking for transparency. We're asking for communication. And I would love to see a reasonable offer to Donkey Land to support our burrows. Donkey Land continues to maintain, and I confirmed last night with the person that runs Donkey Land, they're able to house and take at least 5,000 donkeys and keep them local and safe. They are happy to help us rehome them, adopt them out, maybe even use a process similar to what the BLM already does for our country's wild Mustangs and Burrows as well. By using Peaceful Valley, we're using an outside organization that we are concerned has outside interests such as donkey skin trade. We would love the supervisors to look up the donkey skin trade to see how this agreement with Peaceful Valley is actually financially benefiting Peaceful Valley. They have a very strong euthanasia policy and when they transport the donkeys, their policy is that they can transport them for 48 hours without food or water or putting eyes on the donkeys. When we're talking about transporting very young donkeys or very frail donkeys, our concern is that some of the donkeys...
Thank you very much.
I think that's Frances.
I'm not sure if our speakers went out of the order that I called them in. Francine Burke? Okay, thank you. And then next up to speak after Francine will be Brenda Day.
Is that her?
Yes, please.
Okay. Hello. As you know, I'm Francine. And I concur with that young lady right there about the donkeys. I have a few little notes that I wrote down. I have a few little notes that I wrote down. First of all, I want to know who it was that had the permission, which I'm finding out now, it wasn't even granted permission, to move the donkeys and then tell us about it later. Uh-uh. That's stealing, okay? Well, donkeys belong here. Look, I'm not loud enough? Okay. Anyway. I love those donkeys. And what they did by moving those donkeys basically killed them. Because they moved them in a trailer for how many hours? No water, no feed, nothing. By the time they got to where they're going, they might as well shoot them. It's not fair. I know you guys have a lot more important things to worry about and these donkeys, just moving them is easy. No, it's not. It hurts the communities. We love them. What you need to do is reinforce the speed limits. Provide speed bumps in these long stretches so these people will damage their cars maybe, not the donkeys. The other day, I came across 12 donkeys in the middle of Palm Rita. And cars were just zooming. I stopped my car, hazard lights on. I got out of my car. I hurried them over to the grass, okay? It's easy. We have to take the time to take care of them, not just move them. If you want to move something, how about moving the homeless people out of San Bernardino, putting them in a trailer and moving them to Texas and see how they fare? It's not right. I love them. I'm gonna fight for them and today I've become a volunteer for them and I will do what I can to protect them. Even though you all have your own ideas and you're gonna go the way you want to go, you just gotta know there's people out here that care. And one last note, did you ever notice on the back of a donkey there's a cross? Black cross. That's the cross of Jesus. That's what carried baby Jesus and Mother Mary to the manger. And what a trip. It's Christmas. Hey, let's have a good Christmas and care about the donkeys, okay? Please? They need to be here. That's it.
Thank you. Brenda Day, who will be followed by Tayida Maxheimer.
Hi, thank you for having us here today. I'm also for the burrows. My name is Brenda Day. I am not a resident of the canyon currently. I have friends and family members that are. I also travel fairly often through Ritchie Canyon and San Timoteo Canyon and I'm careful because the burrows are out there. I know that we think it's best for them, or some people think it's best for them to be moved, but I wonder would we do the same in our national forests and state parks with deer or any other wildlife that lives there? Should we ship them out too? There is a difference and a disconnect between what we're hearing from San Bernardino County and the reason they're contracted with Peaceful Valley versus Donkeyland and what they want in a contract with San Bernardino County. Donkeyland has the capability to house and take care of the donkeys and they have a policy to implement in phases, the fencing that would be required to keep them contained. So, I ask humbly for an agenda item that actually lets Donkeyland contribute their side versus San Bernardino and, obviously, we already know what San Bernardino side is, but I'd like to have the two in the same room so that we, as a community, can have total transparency and ask the proper questions of the proper people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tayida Maxheimer, who will be followed by James Grimm.
Hi, I'm James Grimm and I'm here to talk about the Apple Valley Municipal Animal Shelter's illegal and unethical conduct. As the shelter currently operates, it is still in breach of its contractual obligations to the county and the public. The shelter needs to have immediate reforms to enforce its own policies. It's currently not going by its own policies and is guilty of changing them very often Reforms that would make the biggest impact include immediately stopping the practice of putting down animals that have been tagged by a rescue. The shelter needs to no longer destroy claimed animals. The shelter needs to immediately comply with the Amendment 1 of Contract 23-590A1. It is currently not in compliance with that amendment. The shelter needs to allow fostering across the county instead of limiting it to the remote town of Apple Valley and limiting it to a small 24 to 48 hours for every animal that enters the shelter. Additionally, the culture of abuse and harassment from shelter staff to rescuers and volunteers must be reviewed by the county and employees responsible must be removed. I am here because I transport for rescues. I was one of many who arrived at the shelter to pick up a dog for a rescue, one that was tagged, owned, had fosters and adopters lined up, and that animal was euthanized. I wasn't aware of this and I was sitting in the lobby for an hour waiting for the shelter to tell me that they had euthanized an animal that many people had spent hours networking and trying to get out. The shelter callously offered any of the other additional animals that they had, as though it was just a product and the individual animal didn't matter at all to them. This cruel and wasteful practice must stop. The shelter must be held accountable for its actions of releasing unaltered, sick, and parasite-ridden animals that often get the diseases or the lasting trauma from the shelter environment itself. Additionally, I would like to say that we are on indigenous land and it would be beneficial if there was an understanding of the cultural abuses that were inflicted upon the indigenous people by the Bible and how it can be a very unwelcoming thing for indigenous people in this society and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Tayida Maxheimer? All right. I have, the first name is T-A-Y-I-D-A Maxheimer. All right. Veronica Golub, who will be followed by E.T. Snell.
Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. You've had a contract with Apple Valley Animal Shelter, or AVES, for the past 12 years. In the last three years, they have killed nearly 10,000 animals. My petition has over 5,600 signatures asking you to cancel your contract with AVES. While I appreciate the amendment that you signed, what good is it if AVES is not being held accountable? Rather than improving customer service, AVES has become worse. Gina Whiteside is no longer there, so who's actually in charge? According to staff, Whiteside resigned over the summer, so there's no shelter director? AVES continues to undermine networkers, rescues, and adopters. Their intake volume has decreased, but rather than improve relationships with rescues and networkers, they are spending their time concealing and fabricating data. One of our networkers developed a software to track AVES animals. It would upload the kennel cards the AVES posted and notify us when the animals were pending euthanasia, adoption, or rescue. AVES did not want to be monitored, so they took down all access to kennel carts and claimed they had a data breach. However, it did not affect rescue or adopter data. In other words, they did not want networkers to know the status of the animals. What are they hiding? I asked the same networker to include Dvor into this tracking software. This is public information and as anticipated, no one at Dvor blinked an eye. As a matter of fact, I've been monitoring communications between Dvor staff and networkers. It is truly night and day between how AVES treats networkers and Dvor. AVES still suspends rescues for their spay neuter certs, which county no longer requires. So, why is AVES putting rescues through red tape? Rescues don't want to breed more animals. They are definitely not the problem. We have an animal overpopulation crisis and obtaining spay neuter certs from rescues should be the least of our concerns. It's time to think outside the box. You have a population of over 2 million in this county, 63,000 businesses, and 655,000 households. How about using the 1.2 million that you're paying AVES to start a sponsored foster program? Provide financial incentives for households to foster animals. Ask local businesses to help sponsor adoptions and fosters. Collectively, your constituents do not want to see dead animals dumped all over the high desert. How about enforcing animal cruelty, abandonment, and backyard breeding laws? Have a hotline set up to report crimes against animals and provide a reward. Invest in an ultrasound machine for shelters and check all females that come through. Spay the pregnant females. We do not need more kittens and puppies. Any male that enters a shelter should be neutered.
That's time. Thank you very much. E.T. Snell, who will be followed by Kerbek Rez. E.T., are you ready? Thank you.
I thought this was public, county, general?
Yes, sir. Do we have Kerbek Rez? Are you ready? Okay.
Thank you, county supervisor. Takes me about a minute to clown down here.
It's nice to see you, E.T.
Might as well wear my donkey nose. Clowned community activist, E.T. Snell. And how many people can repeat that oath that they took today? How many people know what that oath meant today? And did it mean that you're supposed to protect the public? And if that's true, how come nobody in San Bernardino County is getting warned that the San Manuel Casino and Motel was built on a fault? You know, another big problem in San Bernardino County is the roads, the dirt roads. You know, if you go look at the records at the county, the county has no records of what BLM has. BLM has all those records, they don't share them with you guys. So consequently, we got a drug addict out there, Joey Barrow, lives on Tammy Road, that's one of the sheriff's snitches. He's a drug addict, he's an ex-con. He digs a trench across his road. The sheriffs go out there and say, "Oh, no, it's not our issue." Well, it is their issue because all they have to do is go look at BLM. But they want Justin Phillips and they want him locked up for life. Justin also just got out of prison. But the lady, his mother drives by with the kids in the car to go to school and she says, "Hey, you're not supposed to dig trenches on this dirt road." Well, he's cussing at her. Day and a half later, he goes up to her house, spins circles, cusses at her, threatens to kill her. You know, and is Jason Anderson here or anything from the DA's office? He took the oath to protect and kill her. He got a 10-year-old kid sitting in the house scared shitless because this kid come up there and threatened to kill his mom. Well, she called the police, they wouldn't do anything. Also, Joey Barrow, the famous snitch for the sheriff's department, took a car at Circle K and crashed it. They arrested him, then they let him go. This guy has an extensive criminal record, he's on drugs, but the only thing is, is that finally, what they're saying is that Justin Phillips went over there and shot over his head after he called his mother every dirty name in the book. The sheriff's department cannot, and the district attorney cannot prosecute people that are defending their family and their mothers. Well, he's facing 54 years in the county jail. Now, Justin also...
That's time. Thank you. Kerbek Rez, followed by Debbie Lopez.
Good morning, everyone, and happy holidays. I came bearing gifts for all of those constitutional othetakers. I'm giving you your first copy of the year of the California Constitution, which would help you understand the federal constitution along with its evidentiary support. Because we would like to protect liberty now and stop the overreach, the vector control of every species. Nature has its own way of fixing things and since you haven't compensated any of us, you can't regulate the land you don't own. So, I think there's a notice procedure that goes through and then impeachment can happen. Can we all say the word impeachment and start learning your constitution? Because that's the only thing that's gonna save you from these people's overreach. Happy holidays to everyone and I'll leave this for you, for the record. The Constitution. We expect you to know it.
Thank you. Debbie Lopez, who will be followed by Kirk Hupp.
Hi, my name is Debbie. I'm here in support of a further look into the Apple Valley Animal Shelter. Because it is such a struggle for the public and rescues alike to be able to retrieve and foster animals from the Apple Valley Animal Shelter, I cannot help but wonder if there's some type of monetary incentive, maybe via a rendering plant for that facility to keep the animals so that they can euthanize them. They make it so difficult for rescues to foster animals and get them out of the system to save them. They barely give the animals any time to be available to the public. It would be a positive step if they would open up the supplemental pins to give the animals more than their two days of availability for public adoption. And unlike, say, a department store maybe where you go to shop for a flannel shirt that you find maybe out of stock at that location, but is available at another affiliated store nearby, once a particular animal is euthanized, they are never available for adoption again. Just like our own children, no other offered replacement animal will do when someone has picked out a particular happy animal that they are excited to adopt and bring home. I'd just like to ask for further investigation into that facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk Hupp, followed by Resham Barty.
Hi, I'm Kirk Hupp. I'm here seeking compensation. You send me notices harassing me, devaluing my land publicly, taking act of the federal constitution of the Fifth Amendment, the California Constitution, Act, Section 1, or Section 8. No regulation without compensation.
Thank you. Our last request to speak today is Resham Barty.
Good morning, everybody, brothers and sisters. This is a Spanish-language interpreter. This is not a Spanish interpretation. I've been asked to read Mr. Barty's statement. I'm here for those children suffering in foster care and children family services. CFS violating child rights and medical and education and human parents' rights. CFS is abusing our children mentally and physically and emotionally and medically, neglecting them, and sexual abuse and brainwashing and traumatizing them. Destroy their relationship with our children, using our children as a source of income. CFS is not providing proper care. Terminate the parents' rights and the parents can help them for a better education and put them in sports and tutoring and medical treatment for our children. Our children must allow to attend any family gatherings and birthday parties and holiday and Christmas holidays and religious festivals. Parents must have visitation with their children four hours twice per week, eight hours every Saturday or Sunday, to take to any religious place of their parents' choosing. The county should have to pay all of these expenses. Parents want to see own children, they have to pay cash money to supervise, monitor. Parents cannot afford to pay these fees to see their children. CFS dumping our children on the street when they age out of the system. CFS dumping our children on the street when they age out of the system. The foster care children need permanent housing after they age out and not making homeless our children. CFS must provide advanced technology and online access to remotely monitor the children and storage their records. Parents should have access to education and medical information for their children. Social workers can't go against the doctor's recommendations. CFS, county, don't abandon the children for their parents. Provide advanced medical treatment and education to all children. CFS must provide all medical expert professional to make recommendations for the children and not from the nurses.
Thank you for listening. I have a lot of problems with the CFS. You know, a lot of kids are suffering in their system, so they don't get any proper cares. Also, they have a lawsuit is pending in the court. So I want to be considered to add my recommendation to the system so they can get the proper cares and have a visitation with the parents more often. And they have all humans' rights for the kids. Thank you. Appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you very much. That is the last request to speak that I have, so our meeting stands adjourned. Our next regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting will be held here in chambers on Tuesday, January 14 at 10:00 a.m. Thank you. And we will recess for approximately 10 minutes before we begin the oath of office ceremony.